And you're not even talking about this.
No.
Mike, when the heck you moving in, man?
August first.
Are they gonna be out by August first? Obviously.
We're gonna remodel the house.
What's that?
They're remodeling the house that they bought next to the.
Oh, yeah. That's where Jamie Claybrook. That's Claybrook, I believe.
Call to order of the workshop session for Dunkirk Common Council Meeting, July 2nd, 2019 at 5:00 P.M. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Vamato?
Here.
Councilmember Heenan?
Here.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Here.
Councilmember Elijah Washington?
Present.
Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this is a workshop, we'll skip over certification of the prior meetings, we'll skip over reading of the privilege of the floor regulations, and we'll skip over privilege of the floor and begin with communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor, floor is yours.
Uh, the only thing I want to do is just give a quick update on the project. We are still on target to finish and be completed by the target date, which is our intent. Boardwalk piece should be completed within a month.
Oh, wow, good, good.
Fledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Number six, communications from the public and petitions. Clerk?
Number one, requests from the city, Dunkirk City School District, for three police officers from 7:00 P.M. until 10:00 P.M. At the high school home football games on September 13th and 20th, 2019, and October 4th and 18th, 2019, request for two police officers for the varsity boys and girls soccer versus Fredonia games on September 18th and 19th, 2019, and request for two police officers from 6:00 P.M. until 10:00 P.M. at the high school home basketball games on January 13th, 2020, and February 3rd, 2020.
Uh, any discussion from council, questions or concerns from department heads and chiefs?
Yeah, they're getting ahead of the game.
Okay. Uh, I will make my usual motion and be seeking, I will ask for my usual motion and be seeking a first. Councilman Vamato with the first.
Second.
With the second. Number two?
Request from the Resource Center, Filling the Gap Incorporated, for permission to sell newspapers at city-designated intersections on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019, from 6:00 A.M. until 10:00 A.M. Also requesting police escort from the DNF Plaza along Central Avenue to Washington Park on Friday, July 19th, 2019, for their annual Laurel Run at approximately 12:15 P.M. slash 12:45 P.M. And use of Washington Park to host their victory celebration at the end of the run.
Any discussions, questions, or concerns from any council member, department heads, and/or chiefs? Uh, I will be looking for a motion. Need a first? Uh-uh, Mr. Williams, sorry. Second, Councilman Vamato. Number three?
Request from the city, Dunkirk City School District, for two police officers to be present on Saturday, October 9th, 2019, from 7:45 P.M. to 11:15 P.M. At the homecoming dance and breathalyzer test for each student attending.
Any discussion from the council, questions or concerns from the chiefs? I will be seeking a motion, need a first. Councilman Vamato with the first, Councilman Civalletto with the second. Number four?
Number four, request from Joshua A. Latona of El Rigby Theater to use Memorial Park to host Movies on the Lake on Mondays, July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and August 5th and 12th, 2019. From 5:00 P.M. to 1:00 A.M., soda and popcorn will be sold.
Any discussion, questions, or concerns from any of the department heads and/or chiefs? And council, sorry. I'll be seeking a motion. Williams with the first.
Right.
Vamato with the second. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five?
Request from Phil Collier of the Dunkirk Midget Football League to have their annual Tag Days fundraiser on Saturday, August 17th, 2019, from 9:00 A.M. until 3:00 P.M. at the following intersection, Central Avenue and Fourth Street, Central Avenue and Fifth Street, and West Dodie Street near the fire hall.
Any discussion, questions, or concerns with the council, department heads, and/or chiefs? I will be seeking a motion. Councilman Vamato with the first, Councilman Williams with the second. Thank you. Number six?
Number six, request from Crystal Alt of Applebee's to do a beach cleanup on Monday, July 22nd, 2019, and Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, and a park cleanup on Saturday, September 28th, 2019, for their National Good Neighbor Day. Um, I can answer the question, they left it open for uh, the needs of the city as opposed to any needs that they might have.
As far as the dates go, you mean?
As far as the day, the times and the exact pages.
Thank you for that info. Any discussion, questions, or concerns from any council members, department heads, or chiefs? I'll be seeking a motion. Williams with the first. Civalletto with the second. Thank you, gentlemen. Loudspeaker applications, we have two of them this evening. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read them both off so we can discuss them both individually. If there's no problems, questions, or concerns with either one, we're gonna group them together during the time of the meeting and have them as one motion. Clerk?
A. Lisa Kozlowski of the Dumpolski Club to use microphone amplifier speakers for band, and band, I'm sorry, for band equipment on August 4th, 2019, from 1:00 P.M. until 5:00 P.M. at 179 Lake Shore Drive East during a club picnic.
Any discussion, questions, or concerns just about that one? Okay, next one?
Uh, Joshua Latona of El Rigby Theater to use speakers for Movies on the Lake on July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and August 5th and 12th, 2019, from 7:00 P.M. until 11:00 P.M.
Any questions about that particular one? Mr. Civalletto?
Um, just asking that, since I requested it with the Washington Park, um, if the speakers could be pointed away from the, um, any, any houses. Um, and I think he does, he points it towards Dimitri's. But, just, uh, just keep an eye on, on that and, and make sure that the decal levels are, are low, since it does go until late at night.
You are.
The one before that's from 1:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, I'm not concerned with that.
So, you wanna say that during the meeting as well?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll group both of them together, since there's nothing detrimental, and I'll be seeking a motion. So, Williams with the first.
Second.
Civalletto with the second. Thank you, gentlemen. Courts of standing committees, boards and commissions, Councilman Williams, anything?
Uh, nothing here.
Councilman Vamato? Councilman Civalletto? Councilman Heenan?
Yes, sir.
Any department heads? Anything they'd like to share during workshop?
Andy, I'm just here.
Yes, Mr. Rosas?
To make the council meeting thing. So, I've gotta get back to the shop there, uh, and, um, assign the, uh, these spots for the vendors. So, if you guys have any questions, Civalletto, or the third and fifth, I can answer them now, if not, uh, forever hold your peace.
Our director of festivals, Mr. Hector Rosas, is here. If there's any questions or concerns concerning the Fourth of July weekend and the festivities going on, if anybody has any questions for him, if you could please ask those now, as he will not be attending the common council meeting. Councilman Vamato?
Hector, can you just get a quick rundown of the third, fourth, and fifth, band-wise, time-wise?
Sure, the, the third and fourth and fifth, I believe the bands, uh, the third are Wooden Ship, they're a high school reunion band that is not charging the city, they're doing a complimentary. Uh, they did it last year and they had a, you see, very nice, uh, Wooden Ship, they, they're from all over across the nation, and they, they have a reunion, uh, on a yearly basis. Last year, they lost one of their members, and they'll be honoring them at this year's, uh, presentation. Following that, you have a huge tent piece, very popular, an award-winning band, the Chicago Tribute Band, called Chicago Authority. On Thursday, it all kicks off at 1:00, uh, P.M. Rockin' Robin will be, uh, on stage, they travel the nation, they have all the casinos, a very popular duo. These ladies are about almost eighty years old, and they do a great job. Following that, you'll have, uh, Furious George. You have, following that, I didn't wanna look at my card, but I guess I have.
The Rising.
All right, amazing. Rockin' Robin, Furious George, Midnight Recovery. And then it finishes up with The Rising, which will take us right into Dusk and the Fireworks. And, uh, Randy and I have a plan, it's worked the last few years, and, uh, we'll continue that plan, and, uh, we'll finish that off with a patriotic song, and, and we'll go right into the, uh, fireworks. On the fifth, we have a great show that, uh, on our website has over thirteen thousand visitors in one week. So, this is a tribute to Kiss, and that's sponsored by Brooks TLC Coliseum, and the opening act is another main attraction, which is Passionless. And that takes our third and fourth and fifth of July, and last year, we had over twenty thousand visitors for that week. So, be on the lookout, this is gonna be big, and I don't know what you're gonna do about the dogs, but we had a dog fight last year, and maybe that should be addressed, and we can, uh, put, I'll put the word out there, we'll, uh, see what the chief of police says, but if you can't come to a one-hour show without bringing your dogs, you know? There's a big dog, too, and he attacked a little French Boo.
Thank you.
Something to keep in mind.
Clerk?
Got any phone calls as to the location of the fireworks this year, and could you address whether they've changed or not?
They have not. Uh, the angle for the fireworks will be the same as, has been in the past, the only difference being they'll be, uh, attached to the, uh, barge, it's gonna be at the end of, uh, the pier. So, it'll be exact location, and just in approximately the same angles. And, uh, Randy and I worked out those details with the company, and they're ready, and, uh, Rockin' Robin to go, unless the weather, any cold weather prevails, and then we'll have a cancellation, and it'll be done the following day on the fifth.
Thank you, thank you.
Any further questions?
I got one for you. Um, Hector?
Yes, go ahead.
I see we had a, uh, a band at the flea market over the weekend?
I did.
Did it draw any more foot traffic to the flea market?
And the, the flea market's been doing a great job, it really has, um, they're onto thirteen vendors. Um, Sunday, um, I went to church, but I came down, set up the tent for them, but they did say that it was, uh, less traffic than Saturdays. But, we're just starting that with the bands, maybe we'll do the bands on Saturday. But, the flea markets are really, doing really well.
And the, the bands are gonna be a regular thing now at the flea?
I think we, we can do that, you know, we can do it, we, we don't, uh, get spectacular bands, so it don't cost as much, but they're local bands.
Any further questions? From Mr. Rosas? Thank you, Hector.
Okay, you guys have a good day.
Uh, seeing no unfinished business, we'll move on to number nine, prefiled resolutions.
Number fifty-nine, resolution for approval of 2019 Annual Action Plan for the City of Dunkirk's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah.
Councilman Williams?
Just, I didn't, I just got the thing today, um, I hear it was out there when you grabbed it, on Friday, when I grabbed the packet, but if in the future, I guess maybe this goes to Rich, if, if when we get a resolution that is gonna have some, a plan like that, that we're holding on, can we have that planned with the resolution, so that it's not in something separate? I get this, and I make sure I put this in the right spot, and the other stuff I save and look through at other times and do other things, so I, I never looked at it, and I just picked it up from the clerk's office today when we got here, so I haven't been able to look at it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, moving on to number sixty.
Resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year 2019.
Any discussion on the budget line modifications? Seeing none, moving on to six, sixty-one?
Number sixty-one, resolution rescinding council resolution forty-nine dash 2019 and fifty dash 2019. There's an amended copy of that, sir.
Uh, Rich, can you please, I tried reading that thing two or three times, there's portions of it that seem like a foreign language to me. So, can you, like, put that resolution in layman's terms as to what's going on there?
So, essentially, what it is, is to try to expedite the, uh, completion of Phase Three, and Randy can speak to this in more detail, what he wanted to do was merge the general contractor contract, the one that has the dash G, with the mechanical, uh, HVAC contract, with his dash M, uh, and the one contractor, H and K submitted bits for both, and their combined bid was cheaper than any other, you know, if you put them in combination. So, we decided to rescind, we hadn't signed in contracts yet on the first go-round, uh, to rescind the bid offers and just resubmit that bid for authorization to sign.
Okay, it, it was talking about problems within the?
It was, but that's, that's a Phase One issue that we're addressing separately from Phase Three.
Okay.
That's why we removed the one paragraph.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion or questions pertaining to this? Seeing none, we'll move on to number sixty-two.
Sixty-two, resolution accepting general contract eighteen dash two dash G, join with mechanical contract eighteen dash two dash M for wastewater treatment plant Phase Three upgrades and reconstruction and acceptance, the, accepting the supporting alternative bid eighteen dash one dash G.
I guess that would be the same explanation. So, any discussion?
This then, the, just ends up using the responsible vendor stuff, is that? No, we're, uh, we, we could have, but we instead, um, are, are expediting this, this speed, so we're, uh, we're doing that, uh,
I'm sorry?
We have some issues expanding, we gotta get that in front of the board.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, number sixty-three?
Sixty-three, resolution authorizing sale of parcels of city-owned land.
I have a question. Looking at these particular parcels and bringing them up on GIS, there's one, I can get it real here. The Cedar, Cedar Street one, for Kathy Kern, thank you. Says a thirty-by-one-hundred portion of the unopened Cedar Street adjacent to her property at 134 Point Dry North. If you're standing at her house and looking at the front of her house?
Yep.
That thirty-by-one-hundred lot is behind the house, correct?
No, it's actually her front yard.
So, we're selling the entrance to Cedar Beach?
No.
The road?
So, the road is, you know, X amount of feet, X amount of feet of the unopened road, they literally built out of her front yard, so whenever that house was built, they ate, they just never legally ate it. So, her, a good chunk of her front yard is literally a chunk of Cedar Street. So, we're basically transferring title to something that already has been encroached on, and could, they could have a strong adverse possession claim anyway. Right, so that a portion of her front yard is literally the second half of Cedar on that beach, so it wouldn't be impeding the current roadway going into the beach. It's literally her front yard already, where the tree, the big trees are, so that's been that way by the, where you can see where the trees are located for some time.
That is not what the GIS maps show over, with the layover at all.
I can show you the surveys, I have the surveys that are more accurate. We had it, we had.
And I, and I know this isn't a legal document, I get that, but?
Yeah, I had the surveys, you, you can see it, it's, so the, the street that's there, which is sort of unpaved, is here, and then the front yard, a good chunk of her front yard is literally that second half of Cedar Street. That they fenced and put trees on at some point decades ago, 'cause those trees are pretty big.
So, her property goes into the middle of Cedar Street, is what you're saying?
Essentially, yep.
So, what's gonna happen with Cedar Street?
Nothing, it's the same as it is, we're not changing anything in terms of what actually is being used, that portion of the street that's being used is still there.
So, even, even though this resolution authorizes her to own half of it?
They already do, I mean, in function, so this is just making legal what already is in function and has been for decades.
But we still have the easements of the street.
Right. No, I mean, you're not, you're not giving her the whole street, you're giving her basically the half that, that her parcel already ate. It's the same principle as what happened with Coburn Block, where they built out, legally, that street's supposed to be eighty feet, 'cause it goes back to before they shrunk them to sixty-six. So, that Coburn's building actually goes about eight feet over the old eighty-foot street.
So, it's in the right of way, yeah.
Exactly, so that's what happened with this, they, they built out that yard. You know, probably nobody did the surveying to check, see that it was actually part of that unopened street.
It's not that I don't believe you, it's just that I'm looking at something totally different.
I understand.
So, to me, that's a huge concern, because that's the entrance to Cedar Beach. Yes, we own more property along there, that we could turn into another entranceway if needed.
We're not eating the entrance to Cedar Beach, it already exists. What I'm telling you is, we're not eating anything that isn't already her yard, it's already her yard. That piece that goes in, that entrance, doesn't change it.
Okay, but she's gonna own half of it.
She already does, is what I'm telling you, like, it's not like she's creating more yard, the yard already eats half the street. What I'm saying is, nobody ever checked this years ago when they built out that house and that yard. I can, I can bring you the survey right now if you wanna see it, I know it's hard to see from the GIS map, that's why.
Yeah, and I know this isn't a legal document, as a GIS map, but? Okay, I guess I'll, if you can bring me the survey in between meetings?
Yeah.
So I can take a look at that?
Yeah.
'Cause that is a legal document, so, um?
Does the last whereas cover your concern, though, too, or?
We do that on all the paper streets, that's language that Randy created, just to make sure we preserve our easements for public access and the infrastructure needs.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm gonna reserve decision personally until I see the, the legal document.
No problem.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion for any of those sale of parcels? Uh, number sixty-four?
Sixty-four, resolution authorizing to pay Marina DEC cleanup fine.
Uh, any discussion? Counsel?
For the, for the record, when we get in there, can we get into a little bit, here, should explain what we're actually doing, so that it's on the record? We, we don't need to do it now, but I'll ask you that.
Yeah, not a problem.
Seeing no further discussion, number sixty-five?
Resolution authorizing to engage outside counsel to sue past and present Marina operators for DEC cleanup indemnification and contribution.
Uh, number sixty-five is part of number sixty-four as well, it's the same concern. Any further discussion? Number sixty-six?
Number sixty-six, resolution for authorization of one-month rent forgiveness for Boardwalk Lassies and one-month city tax credit for Dimitri's on the lake incorporated.
Any discussion, council? Uh, in case there is any?
Other than I'm gonna abstain when you're going through that vote.
Okay. Mr. Heenan just stated that he's gonna abstain from it, 'cause he is a business owner down there. Uh, this came up during the finance committee meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I, I brought it up, and with all the construction we have going on down there, like the mayor was discussing, even though it's a short term, where they're going to be immediately affected right in front of their businesses, the Boardwalk businesses, and being a business owner myself, are directly affected, especially since they're only open a few months. Their entire year's worth of income is based on the summer months, they're not year-round businesses. So, as much as there are still parking spaces there, they're limited parking spaces, they do deter people from actually going into the area, because it is ugly-looking. So, I just feel as a good faith gesture to those individuals, that's why I brought this up during the finance committee meeting, as a good faith gesture on behalf of the City of Dunkirk, um, to do this for them. And, um, after speaking with Marcia and Mark, it will not negatively affect, uh, our cash flow for that particular project either, in a drastic way. Any further questions or concerns or discussion on that one? Okay, moving on to number sixty-seven?
Number sixty-seven, intro number four to Local Law, number four dash 2019, City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend Appendix One, Rules of Order for the Common Council, Section Four, three imprentices. I'm sorry, Section Six, three imprentices.
Um, as far as discussion goes on that one, that is pertaining to what we spoke about at the last meeting, as, as a concern for walk-ins. Um, there has been a concern for walk-in resolutions for decades, um, and the concerns still exist today, so we're trying to clean that up. And this resolution and charter change proposes a method in order, in order to clean that up, so there's no further controversies uh, going forward, it will be up to a council vote on whether or not to accept walk-in, that, any particular walk-in resolution. Um, so it would have to be voted on by, by the council and passed by a majority of vote, on whether or not to even accept it first, before we're put in a position to actually vote on the resolution itself. That's basically what that means in a nutshell. Richard, I thank you, uh, for whipping that up, and two weeks since our last council meeting, and meaning you discussed it.
And, Andy, I'd like to add my name to that resolution also. Uh, we're done. Resolution sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven, amendment, Ed Shaw. Okay, we're, we're gonna propose that amendment, and at that time, you'll have the, uh, availability to vote on that amendment, and then we'll reintroduce it, and there's gonna have to be? Yeah, and then we gotta table it.
Right.
Table it for a public hearing.
Is anybody gonna wanna talk about it before we make the, make the motion to table it for a public hearing?
I mean, I'll say what I just said, but beyond that, is there any, you're gonna discuss it as well?
Yeah.
If it does make the table, the public hearing would be set for?
Sixteen.
Five-twenty at, on what date?
Sixteen, July sixteenth.
I'm sorry, I'm good.
Oh, yeah.
Seven sixteen at five-twenty. If it passes to a public hearing. Um, any further discussion on sixty-seven?
Is, council member walking in the walk-in?
That's good, though.
And ironically, our next one is new business, our next agenda item. Any walk-ins?
No.
None.
Seeing none, motion to adjourn workshop?
So?
Chief?
I'll just go back to sixty-three.
Sixty-three, resolution authorizing sale of parcels of city-owned land.
Is this gonna impede access by training grounds, because that, our driveway's on the city property?
I think your easement would remain, and I, from what I understand from Fieldbrook, it's gonna be either green space or parking, so it won't be, they're not paying on that lot.
We have driveway access to the place party training, but I just wanna make sure we don't get you cut out of that.
You're coming off of the, uh, you're coming off of which street there, the Williams? Or off of?
Well, we do, by the army, we have drive, we have driveway access into there, um, and part of it is on the city property, so the training grounds.
Yeah, I believe you have an easement.
For that low, lower vaccine.
Yeah. So, that should remain. If I'm not mistaken, they're not building on that particular lot.
It's supposed to remain, so we'll make sure that. I, I would appreciate it, we gotta block our exit to the place party training.
Yeah, I've asked them to, to release new surveys, so we have the most recent surveys.
Thank you. I know what the, and, and I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause I, I did that up on GIS as well, just to see where the parcels were. And there's a bunch of slivers over there, there's old roads and railroads and, and everything else that was going on. I couldn't physically even find one of the existing parcels. The one, only one that I could find was the one that physically exists between the armory and the PBA.
The bigger one, then there was a small little one off of, it's off of Newton there?
Where, where's that desk? Okay, okay, I'll take a look at that as well. So, chief, are you comfortable moving forward with this? I mean, this is your, your being.
As long as, as long as they don't block our, uh, actually our access and our right of way for the drive, the existing driveway that we have confined, but I mean, I don't wanna lose.
You don't wanna land lock your building.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose the drive into our training grounds.
It's, it's an easement now by, by law and by title, but it would be an easement by necessity either way, because you'd be landlocked.
As long as that's a, a wording, then, you know, I just don't wanna lose our access to our driveway.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
I can help the head of clause today, P, so we.
Cover us, yeah.
'Cause I know they'd approached us about using it for carpeting, and that would be my concern, if they would block it off in the park, and then we would have, we would lose our access.
Okay.
Should we, should we separate that from the vote and make a contingent upon what the chief's requesting, to just to make one-hundred percent sure? We can still pass this, but it'd just be contingent upon?
Yeah, we could just add the contingency.
What it is the chief's looking to accomplish here?
Yeah, it's not a problem.
That, okay?
Thank you.
So, you want me to make a contingent?
Just the last one.
Oh, that's the one on West Dodie, right? Yeah. The one, the little one's on Marsden, you were asking about.
Marsden?
Yeah, that's just a little square.
Yeah, I couldn't find that anywhere. Okay, um? Motion to adjourn?
So?
Second. Councilman Williams, Councilman Heenan, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Washington?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned. Richard, if I could see that survey real quick, please?
Yeah.
I get what you're talking about, but I'd rather be sure that, before we give away our interest.
When Tom, when Tom and I were looking at the GIS maps for the?
Call to order. Call to order, the City of Dunkirk Common Council meeting for July 2nd, 2019 at 5:44 PM. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Heenan?
Here.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Here.
Councilmember Vowashin?
Present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Certification of the prior meetings.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 was presented to the mayor on Thursday, June 27th, 2019. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect. In witness wherefore, I am here to set my hand and the seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York, the 2nd day of July, 2019.
I need a motion dispensing with the reading in the minutes.
So moved.
Councilmember Williams with the first.
Second.
Councilman Civalletto with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
Reading of the privilege of the floor regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes. And to any person representing a group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman-at-large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman-at-large Vowashin shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or are slanderous or nongermain to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limits specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time had expired.
With that said, privilege of the floor is now open. If anybody wishes to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. Jim Fisher with Revitalized Dunkirk. Can I just have a few quick announcements and like that? First, I would like to thank, and Revitalized Dunkirk would like to thank, the fire department for lighting the bonfire at Wright Park at our June BYLC, our Bring Your Own Chair Sunset Watch. It worked out just great. Everybody was amazed by the bonfire. They enjoyed it. Time to just write, so we started Tai Chi just as the bonfire started. So it was great. Out-of-towners were like, "Oh, this is such a great thing," you know, like that. So our July BYLC is going to be on the 21st at Main Street Beach. And we're going to try beach bachi there, so it should be fun. And also, our July regular meeting of Revitalized Dunkirk is on the 18th of July at 6:30 at the Freedonia Technology Incubator on Central Avenue, 214 Central Avenue, right down the street here. So I'd like to see a few friendly faces there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Janie Wagner, and I'm here representing the Chautauqua Cataragus Women's Action Group. And I wanted to make you aware of a couple of events that we, one in the past and one in the future. This past Sunday, we held an event at the Chautauqua County Fairgrounds in conjunction with the Dunkirk Historical Society called Get on a Train Day. And we had a great crowd. I don't have an exact head count, but we feel that, we estimate over 200 people attended. And one of the goals of the event is to encourage an investigation into reopening the Dunkirk train station in keeping with a national goal of having a nationwide passenger rail system. And then I have a letter regarding an event that we are planning for next week. The Chautauqua Cataragus Women's Action Group Events Committee is planning to hold a Lights for Liberty at the Lake Silent Vigil on Friday, July 12th at 8:00 PM at the City of Dunkirk Memorial Park. We, it's a silent vigil. We will be using flashlights, not actual flames because of the breeze off the lake. We're joining hundreds of cities nationwide to protest the inhumane conditions faced by migrants in detention camps along the U.S.-Mexican border. And we were, sorry, dry mouth. We request that the Dunkirk Police Department is made aware of our presence at Memorial Park that evening. And from the National Movement, here's a quote, "We will gather to shine a light and raise our voices against the horrific human rights abuses committed against migrants in U.S.-human detention camps. We welcome the attendance of all who share our commitment to seeing these people treated with basic dignity and concern for their physical and psychological well-being. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this event."
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. Last opportunity. Anybody else wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, privilege of the floor is now closed. Communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick announcement regarding the Pier project. The project contractor just informed me today that they are still on target to complete the whole project by August 10th, which is our target date for it. And also, the boardwalk piece, they're looking to do the paving next week. So we should be completed with that, weather permitting, within a week.
Great news.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Communications from the public and petitions. Number one, clerk?
Request from the Dunkirk City School District for three police officers from 7:00 PM till 10:00 PM at the high school home football games on September 13th and 20th, 2019, and October 4th and 18th, 2019. Request for two police officers for the varsity boys' and girls' soccer versus Freedonia game on September 18th and 19th, 2019. And request for two police officers from 6:00 PM till 10:00 PM at the high school home basketball games on January 13th, 2020, and February 3rd, 2020.
Any discussion? I need a motion to refer this to the appropriate departments, as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions. Councilman Bamasu, or Bamasuno, Bemanto, sorry, sorry, sorry. Bemanto with the first. Councilman Williams with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
Number two, request from the Resource Center, Filling the Gap Incorporated, for permission to sell newspapers at city-designated intersections on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019, from 6:00 AM until 10:00 AM. Also requesting police escort from the DNF Plaza along Central Avenue to Washington Park on Friday, July 19th, 2019, for their annual Laurel Run at approximately 12:15 PM dash 12:45 PM, and use of Washington Park for their victory celebration at the end of the run.
Any discussion, council? Looking for a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
So moved.
Councilman Williams with the first.
Second.
Councilman Bemanto with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
Number three, request from the Dunkirk City School District for two police officers to be present on Saturday, October 19th, 2019, from 7:45 PM until 11:15 PM at the homecoming dance and breathalyzer test for each student attending.
Any discussion, council? Looking for a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
First.
Councilman Bemanto with the first.
Second.
Councilman Civalletto with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
Number four, request from Josh A. Latona of L. Rigby Theater to use Memorial Park to host Movies on the Lake on Mondays, July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and August 5th and 12th, 2019, from 5:00 PM until 1:00 AM. Soda and popcorn will be sold.
Any discussion, council? Councilman Civalletto?
Just because of my, my past concern for, for these types of events that happen late, I would like to just make sure that, that those speakers are pointed away from houses and that after, maybe after dark, that the, the sound is, is tenable. Make sure that it's quiet enough that it's not going to bother anyone.
Any further discussion? Seeking a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
So moved.
Councilman Williams with the first. Councilman Bemanto with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
Number five, request from Phil Collier of the Dunkirk Midget Football League to have their annual Tag Days fundraiser on Saturday, August 17th, 2019, from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM at the following intersections, Central Avenue and Forest Street, Central Avenue and Fifth Street, and West Dodie Street near the fire hall.
Any discussion, council? Seeking a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
First.
Councilman Bemanto with the first.
Second.
Councilman Williams with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
Number six, request from Crystal Alts of Applebee's to do a beach cleanup on Monday, July 22nd, 2019, and Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, and a park cleanup on Saturday, September 28th, 2019, for the National Good Neighbor Day.
Clerk, do you have additional information you'd like to share with us on that?
Yes, they left the actual parks and beaches and times open for the needs of the city as opposed to their own needs.
So there will be ongoing discussion between the city and the organization to set those times, dates, and places. With that being said, I seek a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
So moved.
Councilman Williams with the first. Councilman Civalletto with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
We have two loudspeaker applications before us this evening. There was no discussions and/or concerns that would cause a problem with either one of them during the workshop, so we're going to group them together for one motion, one discussion, and one vote. Clerk?
Lisa Kozlowski of the Don Polsky Club to use microphone amplifier speakers for band equipment on August 4th, 2019, from 1:00 PM till 5:00 PM at 179 Lake Shore Drive Easter in the club picnic. Joshua A. Latona of L. Rigby Theater to use speakers for Movies on the Lake on July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, August 5th and 12th, 2019, from 7:00 PM until 11:00 PM.
Councilman Civalletto, did you want to reiterate your, or?
Yeah, just the, the same request about the, about the L. Rigby Theater down on the lake. And just to clarify why I'm not opposed to the Don Polsky one, it's from 1:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, so that sounds like it, it wouldn't bother anyone in the middle of the afternoon.
Thank you, Councilman Civalletto. Any further discussion? If not, I'm seeking a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
So moved.
Councilman Williams with the first. Councilman Civalletto with the second. Clerk, call to roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civalletto?
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vowashin?
Aye.
Reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilman Williams, floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Randy, at the DPW committee meeting, we got a list of streets and some of the shapes that they're in, but I don't believe that we got a list of what we're actually going to blacktop. Do you have an idea of what's going to be blacktop this year in the city?
We had a very good meeting last week on a lot of items. I'd like to thank everybody who was there. But the mayor and I have not been able to drive that set of streets in the next couple, last couple days,
so we'll get to that and let you know as soon as possible. All right, and then I have some specific asks about, I didn't, I didn't think we had a list yet. So do you know if Fairview might be on the paving list?
The mayor asked me to add that to a list. That would, if the county comes back with a chip seal, then we'd like to do that. So we haven't forgotten about it. The city crews have patched that road pretty nicely, but it, it could use a, a chip seal for, next time we can get to it.
All right, and then the other two are in the first ward. One, and I do believe that you were talking before that we would be looking at doing a water line from Lake Shore Drive to Pine Street on Lemming, and then going over it with pavement. Do you know when that might happen? Is that going to be this year? Because I know last year, we talked about it and it was going to be on this year, but now that we're here, I haven't heard yet that we're doing that this year.
Yeah, I talked with Rob Curry, our water maintenance supervisor, and he's putting together a crew to be able to do that. There's a couple water lines. We have to do the connections on Seal Street. He's got those set up to do next week. And then it'll take more than one week to do them. But then we have some waterline work to do on Lafayette Avenue to strengthen that one. It breaks a lot. And we, it's also on his list for that section of Lemming Street. So Rob and his crew, excellent crew, are working on a plan. I don't know exactly which order he wants to do those, but they're definitely on the list to be done this year.
Okay, so those should be done this year, then?
They're on the list to be done this year, so. All things going well, we will, we're going to get them done, yeah.
Also, there's been a lot of concern about Ocelot Street, the, the same, the same section from Pine to Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, I, I personally haven't taken a look at that yet. I can examine that and give you a report.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll go to Chief Ortalano on this one. The, I got, I was contacted and was asked about a possible parking traffic type, or traffic flow type of issue on North Main Street with the new style house that was put up there. Doesn't seem to be there's a driveway that goes with it. So the person that's living there, or people that are living there, are parking right in front of the house, and that's directly across the street from the Tim Hortons drive-through entrance. And I guess at peak times, that puts quite a, quite a different twist to the traffic that goes through there. So were you able to check that out on anything? And if you were checking it out, did you check it out at the peak times, like earlier in the morning, or?
I've been there in the morning. I was there a couple times today. I have not seen a vehicle parked there. I will continue to watch it. There really isn't much of a choice as to what we can do with that besides passing the local law again by you guys to take parking completely away on that stretch. It is an overnight street. It's not an alternate parking street. So that would have to come through Common Council change if that's what you would like to do. Wintertime, they're going to have an issue because they're not going to be able to park there at all from 3:30 in the morning until 7:00 in the morning because it is an overnight street. It's, the area you're talking about is too far in for a DOT standard for here to corner, so that's not going to work either. I mean, all I can say is I just hope people use their good common sense coming and going from the drive-through into the Tim Hortons for the time being, unless you want to look at completely eliminating parking on that section of the street, which I don't, I wouldn't recommend.
I don't think that I want to look at that either, but just, like I said, I was asked, so I wanted you to check into that and thank you. Also on top of that, Glenn, is there anything that we can do with, with Stella to get them? And there seems to be a lot of land right, right next to the house that's there. I don't know that we can force them to put a driveway in, but I don't know if anybody else speaks to the Stella people to, to say how, I guess disruptive, I guess that might be, be the word to use for what happens there, and if they'd consider putting a driveway in, or do you know if there's a plan to put a driveway in there?
I can look into it. The, the plan was approved as it is.
All right. Then I got a question for Mark. Have we completely switched over to Community Bank yet?
We're in the transition right now. It's going very smooth in the process. It will take, as I've seen it before, probably six to eight weeks before it's fully changed.
Even though Community Bank told us when they were here that they could do it, like, in 14 days?
Well, that part of it is, is done, but we still have active accounts at Key Bank that we have to maintain until checks clear, ACH transactions are completed, et cetera. So it's, it's going smoothly.
So we're pretty much switched there, but just those other accounts at Key Bank need to stay open in case checks come?
Yes.
All right, so if we're switched to that point of it then, when can we expect to start working with Community Bank on trying to do some internet, internet payments and stuff like that for our city business?
Again, once, you know, once it's more transitioned, we'll meet with them again. Possibly, they can do a presentation at the Finance Committee as to what they have to offer and what would be developed.
Okay. Andy, could you set that up, Councilman, sorry?
Sure.
Could you set that up, please? Thanks.
Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Another question I was asked was, was there money at one time for a new playground at Wright Park? And do we have equipment and, you know, if it'll be installed? I guess I'm probably there for that one, or Randy, or somebody.
That I'm aware of, no. There is no funding for it, but we wanted that included for a Phase Two, and we, we're hoping to get that funded.
I couldn't remember it coming through while I was here, so I was, I said, "I don't know. I'll ask and find out if, if there's anything out there." And while I'm talking about Wright Park, there's a few people that have asked currently, if you're at the stadium, to get through and to get to Lakefront Boulevard, you have to go all the way up, cross Pine Street. If Little League's playing there, or if it's school time, it gets to be quite a mess with, with the little ones in and out, and the cars going in and out. Can we extend from that skate park parking lot and go to Servo Street with the, with the access road so that the people that are at the stadium could have a quicker route to get to Lakefront Boulevard?
We can take a look at that. It's been proposed before, and I'd like to get different opinions about that. I'm, I'm not sure. It's, it's a totally positive solution. We, there, it, it's a good problem to have. We have a lot of activity down there that we didn't have before. So we have to look at things like that and other things. The splash pad today was super crowded. The whole roads are crowded, but it, and we have, but we, we, the street department put a crosswalk in that's, I think, is going to be helpful. Like to remind people to use the crosswalk so that people can be identified by that. We have a lot of construction traffic going in and out at the wastewater plant. So it, I kind of would like to think about that and study that, that whole area for good traffic control, for good pedestrian control, and then do the right thing. So it might be something to work with development and get their planners to work with, maybe their car consultants, and, and before I would hop into doing anything right away. I would like to make a master plan.
Okay. The Chief, Chief Ortalano again, sorry, I should have put these in when, in a better order. Were you able to do anything with the last, the last meeting the gentleman was here about, about the speed issues on Middle Road by Webster? Were you able to check any of that out? How's it looking there?
I've, I've had our patrols running radar over there, so they have been doing it on a regular basis.
Okay. I guess also with the Stella stuff, some of the homeowners nearby where they've done some of the demolitions and rebuilds have ended up with, anybody reach out to Stella to see if they're going to try to do anything to try to help those homeowners, especially around that one that we were talking about with, with the parking issue? Some of the residents down there, they got it in their screens and, and on their siding, and they were wondering if they could get any, any type of power washing or whatever on it because they got quite an issue there. So I also said that I would ask, ask about that here. So I don't know who has a contact number for them or anything, even if I could forward that number to the residents down there. And Randy, the, those nub cutoff things, have we gotten them? I know, I was told that at least one of them on Lake Shore Drive is gone. I haven't been able to check to see if those have been all cut off. The, there were two on, two on Central Avenue that we talked about, two on Lake Shore Drive, and then I think Councilman Civalletto brought up one on, on Main Street and Forest Street.
Yeah, I'd like to commend city mechanic Jason Strance for getting at those. He's working on them. I don't know if they're complete, but he's doing a very good job, and as he does on all of his work. So I, thanks for the opportunity to give him a shout-out. I think the chief would agree that he does a very good job maintaining the police cars. He's a very valuable employee. We took him away from the police cars for a little bit to get these things done, and he's very happy to be of service. So, yeah, Jason, Jason's on it.
Okay, thank you. Then another question for you, Randy, is the yacht club area where we had talked about putting signage up there?
Right.
I noticed over the weekend that they were parked in the parking lot and off on the grass, that we've talked, that they shouldn't be on the grass. What can we do? Are we going to get signs up there?
Yeah, there's a plan to put signs on that entire fence. It was designed that way. It's going to be mostly police-fire-only. There's, there's a need to have that there. There will be some ADA compliant disability spaces there. There might be a load-on-load. I'll, I'll check with the first responders to see what they need, and we'll make sure they're more, more than adequate. We will, we plan on putting no parking signs on the east side of that road. The park supervisor, in his way, reminds me of that every single day, so I'll ask him to make the signs and put them in.
And Chief, without any signs up, are you able to enforce anything there if they're there? Can we at least get them off the grass?
There's really nothing we can do if there's not any signage in place. We can hang a parking ticket if they're violation of a posting sign.
Okay. And my last question is, I was working on the Wright, the Wright Street paving today and yesterday, and my boss had asked at the end of the day if the city might be able to look into making that not a truck route there. When they leave Refreshco, they can go right, and they can go left, and both of them will end up getting either telecater Route 5 to, to head towards the thruway some way, and to go across Wright Street, Clostar Drive, as it is named now. That, that's going to probably just end up putting too much weight and wear on the road.
The truck route plan, master plan, should be part of the city's comprehensive plan, so we'll make sure that it is. I'm glad that, yeah. So it's something we'll, we'll study, and if we have to make adjustments to truck routes, we will.
And at, at least if we could get some no-truck signs up there, then.
Yeah, well, there's a pro-
Probably not going to stop everybody, but if it could.
There's a process to do that, so we'll have to, you know, we'll, we'll start that process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All set, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Bemanto?
Bemanto, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm just asking everybody, try to come down to all the festivals this weekend. They start tomorrow at 4:30. The first band is playing. We have three bands on Thursday and two bands on Friday night, so please come down, enjoy, and have a great time. Please be safe. I went through the parks this week, The Point, Memorial Park, and Wright Park. And considering the weather we've had through the spring, they're, they're looking good. So Randy, thank, thank the guys and everybody all the way down. I mean, really, really looking in good shape considering all the rain we had.
Yeah.
So thanks. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Bemanto. Councilman Heenan?
Randy, I just have a few questions. I, I know I had sent you a picture of, I guess it's called a cutout, the one on Central Avenue where it was pretty jagged and sharp, and I just sent that to you and sent it to you as an FYI. But over the weekend, I also got a text from somebody who's, who claims their child almost fell on one of these cutouts that are to the north side of the skate- fell on one of these cutouts that are to the north side of the skate park. There's four of them there, and they're right on the edge of the concrete, and there's four of them spaced out evenly towards the east part of the side. As I was doing that, I said, "I'm going to walk over to the stadium restroom. I've heard so much about it." Personally, I think it's an embarrassment to the city as we get thousands of people down there. We probably had a couple hundred or more just this weekend. I was almost cautious walking in there, not so much because of the ceiling, but just because of the overall appearance of the inside when you walk in. You didn't know if somebody's in there or not, but I understand that's been that way for a lot of years. And as I stood there, I looked over to the building where the pool locker room that used to be, and there's graffiti all in the back of that, probably two or three pieces there, which these people that come in from out of town look at it. That's an impression I get. There's probably a road sign there also, through the walkway that goes down to the lake, and that's had graffiti on it probably, probably for more than a year or two. And I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just asking, you know, the administration, that's something that they can consider taking care of, because we do get a lot of people down there, and it's, it may not be the pier, it may not be a lot of other things we have going on the boardwalk, what have you, but I, it does, it does get quite a few people down there from outside the city. If we have a tournament down there, there's 20 teams, and there's 10 to 15 people on a team, we're talking quite a few people just in one setting. It looked very well-used this weekend. It was actually very impressive to go down there and see the miniature tent city and people down there having a good time and enjoying themselves. So, with that, I'll leave that alone there, but I just wanted to run that by you. And the, the cutoffs is more for a safety issue. I know they try to get those down there as close as they can. Some look like they probably tried to pound them, and they split, the metal splits or what have you. The other thing I'd like to ask the administration to maybe do, and if they may have plans already, you know, probably between Buffalo and Erie, this is probably the longest stretch of public beach between here and there. And I know, you know, it's a lot of work to take care of them, but I feel, my personal thought is that we should be showcasing the beaches and the parks, so these two items that I'm talking about do both. I do know that Mr. Bemanto had said that he thought the Wright Park was in good shape, so obviously the, the weather, we've got past the weather part of it, so they've been able to take good care of the lawn care, landscaping part of it, so that, that's great. But some of these other issues would be nice to take care of. I know I had asked also a couple weeks ago that we still will be using that animal shelter down at Cedar Beach for a while. To me, that's an eyesore, as I mentioned two weeks ago, that you and I know that the inside of it is very nice, the best it can be, I feel. We both looked at it last year. But to go down there and see signs that are tilted or pushed over, just the aesthetic look of everything down there, I don't know how much time it would take to get somebody down there and kind of weed-whack everything and clean it up, because they did do a lot of work there last year, and I commend them on doing that. So, at the end of the day, I have more here, but I'm not going to get into it. I know we have summer out, but do we need more employees in the streets and parks to take care of these type of items? Is that why we seem to be behind with? Some of it is weather-related, but I don't feel that these issues are. I know that we couldn't paint the underpass over on Third and Robin. I know that's something that I've offered to make a contribution to, and I know there's some things we can't, but at the end of the day, is it that we need more employees?
We need more time and effort, and we will do that. The mayor's added more part-timers this year than we've had in a long time for seasonal, and we're increasing that. Mr. Campolo's reading resumes every day, and we're adding to the staff. The, takes a little bit of training to get them up to speed, so we're getting help in other areas as well. There is a contract with Farrell Roofing to fix the dilapidated roof at the bathroom you mentioned at Promanchenko Field. That's a priority. And we, all the other things, totally agree with it. You know, it'd be nice if, if the graffiti didn't exist. You know, it's, we, it seems to grow, and we'll have, well, unfortunately, it takes us away from something else. We could be grooming the beaches. Instead, we've got to go paint over the graffiti. So, I ask people, if they possibly could, to not do that. It's not the worst thing that people can do, but it's, it's just not right. And so, we will, we will get to that. I don't know if more employees is the situation, if educating people is the situation, but we need to have a combination of efforts to address things like that. And I totally agree with you, and some of the cutouts we talked about are being addressed. And bring all of those things to my attention. You do a nice job of taking a picture and sending it to me on my cellphone. Then I can give it to the guys, and we know exactly what we're talking about. So, don't hesitate, anybody, to do that, and we'll get a crew on it. It's, that's all I can say, is it may be adding more employees would be a solution or wouldn't be the complete solution?
Well, part of the solution, if that's how we feel that we needed to move forward on, is that then we have people working on these items year-round. When we have seasonal workers, which is a great program to have, as you just mentioned, by the time you train them and get them to speed, the summer's coming to an end already. These are issues that I would like to see as a councilperson being taken care of right from the get-go. Again, I understand that's some of the weather, but my other question would be, is there a schedule to, they're going to do the roof this time, we're going to get the beaches this day, this is going to take this long, these, we're going to spend a whole day on cutoffs, it's going to take two guys and eight hours to do it? I mean, do we break that down to that, or does it just kind of first come, first served, and we get to it when we get to it? I mean, I don't know how long it takes to remove graffiti from a building. I don't know if you just, you can be blasted, I don't know what you need. I don't know how much time's involved in all of it.
There's, there's two divisions. I'll, then I'll let the mayor talk, sorry, mayor. The Streets Division does a good job with the signs. I will ask them to pay more attention, get some of those replaced. And the Parks Division, Jason Sislevich does, and Billy Curris with Russ's supervision, do an excellent job with the, the beach cleaners down at Wright Park, right now parked, and Jason is on that every day. Makes the park, makes the beaches look really good. So, the parks had, definitely have a schedule. We're expanding their area to make it look even better, and the Streets has their schedule as well. So, we'll get all these things done. Right now, the Streets Division is building a parking lot over at the new dog park, so I'm not going to pull them off of that to do something else. It's, all of these things are important, and the mayor and I will work together to get them all done. Mayor?
And I did want to commend you, I know it's finally come around, I've seen the yellow markings, paint markings along Pete's, I'm sorry, Seal Street for the water line, so I guess that's in the next two weeks, we're going to be working on that. It's been a long time coming. I know these people have been there since October, November. A few of them have their lawns torn up. I don't know when the city will get to that, but we have got to the, to the water lines, I believe is what we're going to be doing, from looking at the markings. So, I want to thank you for that, that's going to be getting done. Could, could you tell me a time that a couple of the neighbors down there on Fox Street and the corner of Fox and Seal might be able to get their lawns done? I know we spoke with it last time, and you said there was a bid, but it was way out there, and you were hoping the city could do that themselves?
Rob Curry has scheduled the corner of Fox and East, East Green to be done next week, and even possibly starting this week. He's got it all marked out, ready to go. We'll build a new sidewalk there, we'll do new landscaping, and in the other corner, we need to dig it up a little bit to tie in the Seal Acres water line into the Seal Street water line, and then we'll re-landscape that entire area, too. I expect to be able to make some kind of curb protections against some of our water line pertinences. There, there are nice curbs on East Green, and I'd like to make a curb return to match that, so it isn't just a road that ends right there, and then, and there's broken curbs. So, there has to be some things built there. The Water Maintenance Division's willing to take this thing on, and that's the, so I talked about what Streets do, what Parks do, Water Maintenance is gearing up to catch up with Seal Street and then do the other things, too.
And again, you know, I, I'm glad that they're moving on with that. Again, my concern was, these people have been waiting since November, you know, so it's, it's a long time for somebody to have to look at that.
Yeah, we did, we did intensive water, the same crew was on night shift for about a month doing water line flushing and hydrant testing, and they did an excellent job. I'd like to commend Steve Zatorski and Jim Ganey and others who helped those two flush the water lines. It takes, I mean, there's 100 water lines just in, just in the fourth ward, so there's more than 400, I'm sorry, hydrants, more than 400 fire hydrants, so we did flow tests this year. That takes a longer time to flush, but it also gives us a good picture, should, should there be something different in the system that's restricted the flow, and Chief and I have found a few where we want to do that. So, I, you can't do everything at the same time. It's the same crew that did the flushing is going to be moving over to Seal Street, and then moving over hopefully to Lemming or Lafayette and get all that done. And so, I got nothing but praise for them.
And that's why I asked a question, do we need more employees? But I don't get an answer, and these people here, their lawn's torn up for eight months, and it might be another two or three months before it gets done. I think that's ridiculous.
No, I, I think the employee numbers should be addressed at the time of, time of budget. I would be, if you can find the money to do that, I'm all in favor of it. Nothing, nothing comes for free.
That was my question. My question was, do we need more employees?
Yeah, I would be-
I asked, "Do we need more?"
I would be in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
But they don't, they're not free.
I understand.
Yeah.
Is that all?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Silvato?
I just wanted to thank everyone who came to the Train Rally that we had at the, at the fairgrounds. Not that we, but CCWAG and, and the Historical Society was really well-attended, and wanted to throw my support behind the Train Depot actually being redone here in Dunker. There isn't one, Amtrak generally wants to have a stop every hour, and between Erie and Buffalo, we're the hour, and we've been denied that train stop since 1972, so it's time to bring it back. Just had a, one thing for Randy, actually two. Orchard Street, if we could just make sure that that's on, at least, I think it should be on, on the list, because our ambulance is on Orchard Street, which is the street by School Three. That one looks like it might need paving. I go up that, it gets a lot of traffic, too, because it's the, between 60 and Grant there, or Monroe, that's how you get to it, so it, it gets a lot of traffic. And when we're talking about the little metal things, I found another one on Franklin and Courtney on the odd side by the railroad tracks. Looks like there used to be a sign there for something.
If you kindly take a picture of it?
Got one.
Okay.
I'll send it to you. I forgot to send it to you.
All right.
All right. Had a question for the CDBG Director. I'm blanking on your name right now, I'm sorry.
Jill.
Jill, I'm sorry. The mayor, I know, had walked some streets in my ward, looking at possible sidewalk repairs. Is that one of the things that's included in here, because it's kind of, it's real generalized terms, is that number two in here where it says, "Improve infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure"? Is, is that one of the projects that's included in that, or are we waiting another year for that?
No, sidewalks are actually a previous year project, so we were walking the streets and taking photographs in preparation of starting work on that.
Cool.
We've identified several blocks and are putting together a request for proposals to get that work started.
Fantastic, because that would be something that, that my area needs right there. And I thank the mayor and Jill for, for taking the time to walk that and see exactly what the conditions are, too. To talk about the sub, the truck route, truck route concerns, at the last Public Safety Committee, I did say we were going to put together a subcommittee, so I will get on that, and we'll talk about Wright Street. We'll bring that up as seeing if there's something that the chiefs have as a recommendation along with Randy, to see if that's, if that's a viable solution to go up and down Franklin instead. And just want to say Happy Independence Day, and enjoy your, enjoy your vacation, if you have one. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Silvato. Sorry to prolong it, but I actually have a few things on my agenda today, too. I usually don't. Ms. Wagner? Oh, she left. I was going to refer her to a frequent contributor at the podium, Ms. Valerie Pavlock, in case she has any questions about the train station. I'm sure Valerie Pavlock has tons of information that she would love to be able to share with you about that, so, Ms. Wagner, if you are watching, or do read the newspaper, if this makes the newspaper, Ms. Valerie Pavlock could help you out in that endeavor.
She was there.
Yeah, she was there.
She was there? Okay.
Sure, she talked to her.
She's probably all caught up, then. Couple, couple questions. Mayor, City Marina, the Impact Team, I know I asked you this during the financial, financial committee meeting, the Impact Team has been down there working for a couple weeks. Can you please let me know exactly what they were doing down there at the Marina?
Certainly. The Marina, as you all know, is owned by the city, and anytime anything breaks out there, the city has the responsibility of fixing it, and our guys were sent out there to fix certain things that were broken.
Okay, does that include equipment?
No.
Okay, so they weren't repairing docks or equipment or anything of that nature?
They may have been repairing docks if docks were broke and considered a matter of public safety. I believe there was one dock that was. The boat launch had docks that were damaged, and we had to repair those as well. In fact, there was, I believe, an accident last night, and one of the docks that was put in just recently was damaged last night, so we may have to send guys there once again.
Okay. The, the boat launch ones, I can totally understand, as far as us taking some responsibility there. The ones I do have a concern about and have received a couple complaints about are the docks over on the actual Marina side. We have had Marina owners in the past that have had all their own electricians down there doing work, that have had all their own staff down there doing work on the docks themselves. We've had a past Marina owner sell the docks when he was losing ownership of the place. It says right in the lease that we signed with Mr. Pringle, "The city acknowledges that as of the effective date, Chadwick Bay is the owner of the equipment," and acknowledges that the city does not own any of the equipment, including the docks situated at the premises. So, I just don't want to set a precedent going forward, in case anything happens with any future owners, that we would be down there repairing his personal property on city time.
Right, so that property belongs to the city, just so that we're clear on that.
Okay.
And if we have to, maybe we can have the attorney look into it and check into it with NICOM so that you can have something in writing.
Okay.
That way, when you're asked out there, you can actually show them in writing.
Okay, thank you.
But the city does still have the responsibility of ensuring that these docks are safe. If somebody should have an accident on these docks, the city will be the number-one entity being sued. So, as a liability factor, it is in our best interest to ensure that they are safe.
Now, you're speaking just about the, the city boat launch, or Chadwick Bay Marina as well?
I'm talking about the docks that I believe you were referring to.
The Chadwick Bay Marina docks?
I believe so.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we'll have to look into that, then, because the lease says just the opposite. So, okay.
Yeah, so, so when you say that the previous owner sold these docks, that is true. He sold them, and he was not supposed to sell them. The city could have gone after him for that.
Okay. Second question I received from somebody down there, the New Mexican Restaurant that's in the boardwalk, recently received air conditioning. Is that true?
Yes, it is.
At whose expense?
At the city's expense. The city owns the boardwalk. I believe all of you are aware of that. That building is owned by the city, and all of the merchants there are leased from the city.
Other vendors that are at the boardwalk that have AC, who purchased their AC equipment and installed it?
I'm not sure. If I had known you were going to ask these questions, I would have had the answers prepared for you, but I don't, I don't have.
Because I'm being told by a couple of them, so, Richard, if you could look into this, I'm being told by a couple of other different owners down there that they had to foot the bill for the air conditioning and the installation of it within their premises, but this new restaurant, the city paid for it.
Yes.
So, it's a difference, you know, that either they pay for it or we pay for it, and apparently a couple of the owners- a couple of the owners are trying to figure out why they had to pay for theirs and...
Let me just answer. I wasn't here when these folks came on board, but anybody that's been there since I've been in, yeah, we're trying to accommodate them and help them out so that they become successful.
I agree.
So...
Hence, my resolution I have coming up. But if you could please, Richard, look into that so we can get clarification on who's responsible for the expenses for air conditioning install.
Just in general, I don't even know if this is on, but in commercial leases, you may be familiar with, Andy, the capital expenses are the expenses of the landlord, and that would be roof, that would be plumbing, that would be walls, that would be usually HVAC, and any business fixtures or any of that stuff, equipment that's part of the business is usually the lessees, the person who's renting, or the business that's renting's responsibility. So, I mean, that pertains both to the city-owned properties on the Marina and also on the boardwalk. So, the same principles apply. I guess there's a question of fact as to whether the docks are considered capital or not. We'll have to look into that. I'll check that out. And then I'll check about the HVAC, too. We do know that there's been some questions. Some of the older leases go back to the Frye administration, and we've been drafting newer leases since, I believe, my predecessor, or my immediate predecessor started the new template, and we've been using that and modifying that for the tenants that have renewed since and the new ones that we just signed up. So, there may be some differences in what was included in the old leases versus the new. We can check that out.
And I agree with that. It's not like they're going to pick the air conditioning up and all the docks and everything and take it with them when they move out.
Right.
I totally get that. I totally agree with that. The commercial leases, totally familiar with it. I just wanted to clarify expense-wise, because there are some other vendors down there that are asking why they had to pay and this one doesn't. I can't even read my own writing. Oh, I'd like to commend an individual. The Dunkirk Housing Authority is not part of the city of Dunkirk government. Let me put it that way. It's not part of the city of Dunkirk government, but it plays a vital role within our community. It owns a lot of land. It owns a lot of vital land. It houses many of our residents, so it plays a vital part to our community. And I would like to commend Attorney Peter Clark, who served on the Board of Directors and was their legal counsel for the past 13 years. He resigned this past week. It's unfortunate he had to resign due to the circumstances at hand. And I'd also like to commend former Executive Director Rachel Bradick for her short time being on the Board. And in term, she did a lot of positive changes, physical positive changes, that I noticed being in that type of business. So, I'd like to recommend her as well, or commend her as well for great work, since she's no longer there either. And with that being said, Richard, I spoke to you right before we walked in this room. For the record, to put to sleep any possible conflict of interest, since the City of Dunkirk Housing Authority legal individual resigned recently, and there's a gap for legal representation on their behalf, did you at any point in time represent the Dunkirk Housing Authority and offer legal advice?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear for the record to get rid of any possible conflict of interest that may be talked about out there. That is all I have for today. Prefiled resolutions, number 59.
Number 59, resolution for approval of 2019 Annual Action Plan for the City of Dunkirk's Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program.
Any discussion, council? Councilman Williams?
Just a suggestion, when we have a resolution like this in the future, not necessarily just for CDBG, but anything that has a plan that comes with it that we're approving, if we could have that plan with the resolution, that would be great. There's a little bit of mix-up on where the actual plan was. I do believe that we've all received it and we're able to look at it now, and I think we can be comfortable moving forward to vote on it just in the future so we don't have that question if any and all plans that we have to vote on, if they could be with the resolution, that says that there's a plan, that would help me out and I think everybody else out, too, if we could have that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Heenan?
Just for a point of record, and I know last meeting we voted on, I believe, $130,000 for the Dog Park Animal Shelter, and $50,000 was set aside for the renovations, and $30,000 was from CDBG monies. I don't think it's a big deal, but we voted on that before we even approved the CDBG plan. In other words, we were voting on accepted money already, but just as a point of...
You're talking about the order?
Yes.
You spent the money before we even approved the money?
Correct.
We haven't spent it yet, I don't think.
No, we haven't.
But understood.
Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 60, resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year 2019.
Any discussion, council? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 61, resolution rescinding council resolution 49-2019 and 50-2019. There is an amendment, sir.
There is an amendment to that resolution. Resolution number 61 includes four whereas's. The amended resolution deletes the entire third whereas. So, if the council can please make note of that, the third whereas is entirely deleted in the amended resolution. At this point, I need a sponsor for the amendment.
So moved.
Councilman Civileto, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Williams, you will now be voting on the amendment. Clerk?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
You will now be voting on the resolution, as long as there's no further discussion on the resolution as amended. Clerk?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 62, resolution accepting general contract 18-2-G, joined with mechanical contract 18-2-M for wastewater treatment plant phase-three upgrades and reconstruction, and accepting the supporting alternate bid 18-1-G.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 63, resolution authorizing sale of parcels of city-owned land.
I had some questions during the workshop for City Attorney concerning the Kathleen Kern purchase of a 30-by-100 portion of unopened Cedar Street adjacent to her property at 134 Point Drive North. I ended up looking that up on... What am I trying to say? GP, not GPS.
GIS.
GIS system, and looked at the overlays of the property lines and everything, and things didn't line up. GIS is not a legal document. I understand that, but that's why I questioned it. So, Mr. Morris Row brought me the legal document, which is the actual survey itself from this transaction, and I am satisfied with what I saw on the survey itself and as a legal document, that it will not affect the entrance and exit to Cedar Beach in any way, shape, or form. Plus, I believe Randy offered to mention something in the lease at the time of the transfer of land that makes mention of us retaining rights to the use of that particular strip as well.
We'll take care of that clause and also...
The chief wants a special clause in the one that affects their affected land, and City Attorney and I will work on all of those and show it to the affected people before the deeds get filed.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Yeah, I have some language we could just add to that, that last one for the Wells Field Book purchases, just to cover that.
Okay, I was going to make a contingent, I had a contingency that I was going to put on it, or...
Yeah, I was just going to say, kind of a contingent upon reservation of access easement by PBA to PBA-owned lot.
Yep. Okay. Can you read that again?
Reservation of access easement, i.e. driveway.
Reservation of access.
By PBA to PBA-owned lot.
Driveway entry.
I had something similar to that. Yours is much more legal sounding, though. So, he satisfied my questions on the Kathleen Kern purchase. The other purchase, which is the Wells Field Book Foods, which is what Mr. Morris Row is speaking of right now, there were some questions pertaining to that as well, as we were wondering whether or not our PBA training grounds would be landlocked at that point. So, we are going to add to that at the time of purchase and time of transfer, a clause in there that reads, "We are transferring this contingent upon reservation of access by the PBA to the PBA-owned lot." So, that will be part of the deed at the time of transfer as well. Mayor?
Just want to add to that, that this whole resolution is part of a major expansion project by Wells. They're looking to spend about $30 million over two years with this expansion project, which will bring in well over 50 good-paying jobs, family-sustaining jobs here to the city. And as far as the issue with the PBA, I made it very clear to them at the meeting what the situation was, so everybody's in understanding of what the expectation is. And if the need arises that we have to relocate that PBA, that's something that I'm willing to explore as well.
You read my mind. I was actually going to add that. Maybe they just want to pie the PBA out. Any further questions, concerns, or comments pertaining to that resolution? Councilman Williams?
I just wanted to add on that the survey that you did look at was a very recent survey, I believe it was February of this year.
That's correct.
So, just so that we know, that it's an updated survey. So, I just want to thank everyone for just making sure that we're around. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Any further questions or concerns? Clerk, call the roll for Resolution 63.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 64, resolution authorizing to pay Marina DEC cleanup fine.
I'm going to ask, Richard, this is a headline that gets attention, the way it's read, so if you could please explain?
Yeah, so, the city, at some point, I believe, in the '70s and '80s, started to acquire parcels of the Marina area over there that were private parcels, permanent domain, and that's the land that created the boardwalk, created the Marina, and then that we ground leased to the Clarion, which I believe was a Radisson before them. So, the part where the Marina is, has had different operators operating the Marina since the mid to late '80s, and at some point in around, in or about 2011, there was some complaints of gas and oil spills on the land at the Marina, and so the DEC came in and addressed that and did a cleanup. But as part of that cleanup, they also unsurfaced a few tanks that had been buried that they were able to date back to the late '80s. So, as part of that cleanup, because we're the title holder right now, we're responsible, but under state law, when you're got kind of stuck holding the hot potato, so to say, you have the rights to go after previous owners when there's environmental cleanup involved. And so, step one, which is Resolution 64, is we have to address the fine, and they've allowed us to pay that over five years on a monthly basis. So, at the same time, simultaneously in the following resolution, we're going to go after essentially the insurance policies of those Marina operators for contribution. And then it'll essentially be a battle of insurance companies over who's responsible. More than likely, it'll be whoever was operating the Marina in the late '80s and whoever was operating the Marina during the spills that were being addressed around 2011. But the insurance companies will loop that out, and eventually will be reimbursed for whatever we paid out to date, once that's settled.
Okay. Any further questions? I just wanted that clarified, because when you see DEC cleanup fine, it sort of catches people's attention with a little bit of scariness to it, and a couple of words that are in the headline of the next resolution as well are sort of scary. So, seeing no further discussion, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 65, resolution authorizing to engage outside counsel to sue past and present Marina operators for DEC cleanup indemnification and contribution.
Quick question I just thought of, Richard. Are the current and/or past Marina owners already aware of this, or are they just going to be reading this for the first time in the newspaper?
Well, those that were involved during that time when the cleanup occurred will be aware of what happened, but the rest, they'll be reading this in the paper. And essentially, it's like a personal injury case when you're in a car and you get hit, you just hand over the paperwork to your insurance carrier, and they hire insurance defense counsel to handle it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 66, resolution for authorization of one-month rent forgiveness for boardwalk lessees and one-month city tax credit for Dimitris on the Lake Incorporated.
This is also something that we discussed in the Finance Committee meeting last month. I brought this up as a possibility, as a good-faith gesture to the individuals and businesses that operate around that area because of the construction going on. While there is still some parking, or most parking still is available, it is under construction. It does look ugly. It might deter from some people going down there at all, just because they don't want to deal with construction, just like on 20 and 60, they don't even want to go to that corner at all while it's under construction, just to avoid it. We hope that people don't avoid our businesses and avoid our boardwalk while it's under construction. We want as many people down there as possible, but the reality of it is, some people do stay away because of the construction. And being so, that the boardwalk is only eligible, well, realistically, they only make their money a few months out of the year. Even though they could be open in January and February, nobody wants to go to the pier in January and February. So, realistically, they only make their money a few months out of the year, so as a good-faith gesture, I brought it up to possibly do this for the individuals down there. And just as a footnote, since Councilman Heenan is an owner of a business on the boardwalk, he will be abstaining from voting this evening on this particular resolution. Any further discussion? Councilman Heenan?
Andy, although I have to abstain, I can tell you that the boardwalk business people are very appreciative of your thoughts and concerns, as you relayed to me about a month ago, and I wanted to share that with you, not knowing how the vote's going to turn out. Again, they thank you, so, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Civileto?
That was an abstention. Let's back that up a little bit. Strike from the record that clerk asked Mr. Heenan for his vote.
I was going to skip.
Councilmember Civileto?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlajvawash?
Aye.
Number 67, intro to number four to Local Law Number 4-2019, City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend Appendix 1 Rule of Order of the Common Council, Section 6-3.
Okay, for a little discussion on this one, I'm tired of hearing my own voice today. For a little discussion on this one, this pertains to the, I don't want to say controversy, but the questions and discussions we had at the last council meeting pertaining to walk-in resolutions. As I promised at the last council meeting with Mr. Morris Row, to come up with a solution to it, and the simplest solution to it, since this has been going on for decades, was to allow, through the law, through the city charter, some type of avenue for the city council to vote on by a majority vote on whether or not they even want to accept that particular walk-in resolution prior to that walk-in resolution being voted on itself. So this local law introduction does exactly that, it gives the common council an opportunity to see if they even want to accept it or do anything with it for that day. That does not mean it will fail and goes away if they don't accept it that day, it just means it's going to be pushed to the next common council meeting, that's all, and put in on a timely basis and prefiled. So it doesn't mean that we're not doing anything with it, it just means it's being pushed to the next council meeting. Any further discussion on this particular? There is an amendment to it that was suggested. Mr. Heenan would like this to read by entire council, is that correct?
No. No, I had asked to put my name on it with Mr. Williams.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Resolution 67 is sponsored by Councilman Williams. Councilman Heenan would like to add his name to it, so I have to ask for a roll-call vote for the amendment to the resolution to add Mr. Heenan. Clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Savalotto?
No.
Councilmember Adlajvawashin?
Aye.
Mr. Heenan is now a sponsor of Resolution 67, along with Councilman Williams. We now need to... Is there any further discussion on this? Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Savalotto?
I think this is adding another layer that doesn't need to be added. We have the ability to table things, gentlemen. That's essentially what this is doing. If you don't have the votes, or if you think that you need more time, then you say, "I would like to table this for more time." It's like that with every single thing that we have. So to have to add another vote to every single walk-in resolution, there have not been, as opposed to what a lot of councilmen here have said, there have not been that many walk-in resolutions in this administration. I see one every four meetings, maybe, and the walk-ins are generally because of a time constraint. So you already have this ability to do it, to add another layer of rules of order to something that's already in the Roberts Rules, I just don't understand. It does exactly the same thing as tabling, so that's all I have to say.
Any further discussion? Councilman Bemanto?
I agree with Councilman Savalotto, it's another layer that we really don't need. There is a lot of things happening in the city that hasn't happened in quite a long time, so once in a while, you have to bring up something that has to be done at that time. Or we have the choice of not to entertain it that night. Now, I'm going to ask city attorney, what is the process if you bring a resolution to us, a walk-in, and we don't agree with it that day? What do we do now?
Table it.
Table it. Now, I did go out and talk to some former councilmen that sat here before us, and they said that it's totally crazy that we're trying to pass this through, and we do the same thing what city attorney just said, we can just table it, discuss it. So I think it's just another layer, I don't understand it, to tell you the truth.
Councilman Williams?
I make a motion to table this for a public hearing on July 16th at 5:20.
Motion to table, ends the discussion, is there any second to the motion to table? Councilman Heenan with the second. Clerk, call the roll on the motion to table for a public hearing on 7:16 at 5:20.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
No.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Savalotto?
No.
Councilmember Adlajvawashin?
Aye.
Number 67, intro number four to local law, there will be a public hearing at council meeting, on the council meeting of 7:16 at 5:20 PM. Any walk-ins before us today? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilman Williams with the first.
Second.
Councilman Heenan with the second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Heenan?
Aye.